It's 6 o'clock. This is the Lee-New Hampshire joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Budget Committee. Since we have Selectman Bugby here who has been a representative to the Advisory Budget Committee over the past weeks, months, I have asked him then to go ahead and run the meeting, if you would. So, Selectman Bugby.
Well, we've only got three members, so it's not really an A, B, C meeting, but it's still a Selectmen's meeting. So, but Andy, if you wanted to start the presentation, hopefully other members will show up.
Sure. And I don't get the one right here. The first portion of the budget that I've got in front of me that relates directly to us is the Board of Selectmen budget, and I'll go line by line. The first I am showing is the Town Administrator salary. That is not what the Town Administrator is actually being paid at this point, but per the conditional offer, there is the potential for that to be paid to the Town Administrator. So, we use the figure that was the potential final number. The Assistant Town Administrator, you'll notice that is a name change from a recent Select Board meeting, and that would be the Office Manager, who is now the Assistant Town Administrator, and is staying at an adjusted salary that she had, which is slightly higher than where she was before. Most of these other items have not changed. They've been just about the same, and this was a combination of Denise Duval, myself, and Joanne Clancy going through these numbers. I don't know if there are questions about the Board of Selectmen's portion of the budget? I believe Linda had already presented Elections and Registration, as well as Town Clerk and Tax Collector, which are the next sections in order of the pages we have. If we move to Financial Administration, this is very much the same with a few small changes. This is the Finance Director's salary, the Assistant Finance Director, who is also the Deputy Town Clerk. Her salary is split between the financial portion of the budget and the Town Clerk, Tax Collector budget. Couple of things went down. Legal notice and advertising was dropped based on past history. Postage was increased as there are going to be postal rate increases over the course of the next year, and that was about it. As you drop down a little further into the telephone landlines, the telephone landlines in the Town Office have been replaced by voice-over Internet Protocol lines. So, you'll see zeros on landline sections here, but you will notice that Computer Services, that contract has escalated to cover full services for this year in the building associated with the computers and the Voice-Over Internet Protocol for the phones.
Andy, can you, you've got cell phone reimbursement.
That will be going away.
But you request in a thousand dollars for this.
I did notice that, and I believe that was just left in the budget. That will be going away. The cellphones that we've ordered, which are not coming as quickly as Verizon told us they would, should alleviate the reimbursement. We should have those, I'm hoping, by the end of this week. The other thing you'll notice, we left the computer hardware and new equipment at zero. I want to get firm estimates from Steve at Back Bay about what he recommends for replacement as we discussed at last night's meeting, and also what the cost would be. And in particular, my priority would be the server in the Town Offices, which was due to be replaced in the 2020-21 budget and was not. At the time, $6,000 was budgeted for that server, and I suspect that we may need more than $6,000 to replace it. And that is a 2014 server, so we're interested in keeping up to date.
Andy, can you tell us, when was the last time you went out to bid for Computer Services?
I'm going to say, and I did look at this information, I'm going to say 12 years.
I think it's...
2012 is when...
Okay, I had 12 in mind, but it just...
2012 is the last thing you had.
I think it's time to go out to bid again.
Every nine years?
No, I think a little bit sooner than that, but...
I would think that if you don't do it annually, which I know a lot of communities don't for IT, that three years or three to five years might be a good recommendation, and we could certainly do that. I know Denise and I had some difficulty finding the original contract or the most recent contract with Back Bay, and we did indeed find what we had, which was the 2012 paperwork, and it was, I'm going to say, a page or two.
They have not changed their amount that they charge us.
In nine years.
So, that was a quandary we had. Wonder if we rattle them, what are we going to get for quotes? But on the other hand, that is a long time to go without competitive bids.
So, you had 35, which has been what it's been forever, and then it went to 45. Is that a placeholder?
It is not. That includes the Voice-Over Internet Protocol for the phones. You'll notice there are zeros on landlines around here.
So, that's the 35 plus the...
Plus the phones. And I believe there was one other service that Joanne had mentioned that I don't have in front of me, but I can find out.
That's not coming from Back Bay. It's through the Voice Over.
I believe that is through Back Bay, through our contract with them. I'll double-check on that, but I did ask Joanne, and that was Joanne's response, was that was being billed through our Computer Services contract. The assessing budget is what it is. That's our contract, and we're contracted with MRI. We have Sean in the office during the week, and Scott Marsh, as needed, and typically he's in on Mondays, and has been busy meeting with people over the new assessed values. Legal expense increased slightly. That's sort of a guess. You can see the history. The Fair Point has been zeroed because that should be done and gone at this point, so there's no additional legal expense for utilities finagling. If you turn to the Personnel Administration section, you'll notice the salaries here are in yellow, as well as some of the insurance items. That's because the Board has not set salaries for the upcoming budget, so we moved last year's salaries as placeholders. The one thing I would offer, though, I do have insurance numbers. Joanne did put the workers' compensation and the property liability and the estimated unemployment numbers in at the new increased rate, but we saw a fairly significant jump in health insurance. The overall rate was about 5.4%, and what that does is take us from $35,430 a month to $37,343 a month. And it makes a fairly significant jump. That, oh, that 413 line goes to, I believe it's 430, 431, maybe a little higher. The other thing that is going to change in this budget that's going to make a big difference as the salaries are added is retirement. Once again, the state contribution, the state orchestrated contribution for towns has increased significantly. I think I've got the percent here. The town contribution for non-state employees is going from 11.17% to 14.6%, and that's for standard town employees. The police group is going from 28.43% to 33.88%, and fire is going from 30.09% to 32.99%. And, you know, over the last 10 years, that's been a 14 or 15% increase in those lines. Goes up every year, and I think, as everyone is aware, it is legislatively mandated by the state legislature, so we're stuck with it.
So, those increases are not in yet?
Those increases are not in yet yet, no. When we finalize salaries for the staff, we will update all of those, as well as FICA, Medicaid, Social Security.
Can I ask a question that goes back to the beginning? Would Linda retire? Can we just review the timing on Linda's plan and what that does for the Assistant Financial Services, how you Liz?
Sure. Well, it depends a little bit on assumption, assuming that the Assistant will indeed run for the Office of Town Clerk and get elected, although I think there's a fairly good chance. Do you have the exact, Linda is thinking of retiring or is going to retire?
Thinking of retiring before the next election, but if she doesn't, then someone would be appointed to the deputy, um, to her position if she left in mid-year.
If she left mid-year, yeah, but...
So, we...
Her plan is before the next election, but we've had nothing in writing, so to speak.
So, the plan would be to replace Liz in the Financial Services?
I would assume that would be the Board's decision, but if Linda left before the election or sometime after the election, the Board could certainly appoint Liz to take that position. If Linda, you know, gives some notice, then Liz could be appointed and run for the position.
We also talked about last night, because we think Steve needs some help, that if that all comes to pass, the halftime position, then it helps Joanne and somebody half-time to help Steve, they could share, you know, they could be the same person. And then the Deputy in the Town Clerk office can go back to being the department person as well as before. But, you know, just like Andy said, a lot of things have to happen, so...
It's true. Some other information you might be interested in, it looked to me from notes from past budget sessions, Budget Committee, what I was interested, one of those being payment in lieu of vacation. There are eight employees who are senior enough to be eligible for that. We left the budget amount flat on that. We went a little bit over last year, but in reviewing the history, the former Town Administrator was one of the larger users of that service, and she's no longer with us, and I'm not eligible. We have eight employees. Pete Hornhatch, Scott Nemmett, Karen Rossi, Tom Dronsville, Annie Cole, Joanne Clancy, and Chip Bellier, who are eligible. All of them have, at some point or another, used some of the payment in lieu of vacation, but they haven't been heavy users, and we felt confident that the number would probably be well below $10,000. The other, I can give you some insurance numbers, too. The property and casualty increases were far significant.
That's what we got from the left.
Too many notes. The workers' comp estimate, and this is the guaranteed not to go above at our July renewal, there was a $1,983 estimated increase, bringing the workers' comp total to $40,599. Property and liability program also saw a pretty significant hike. Last year, we paid $50,609. Our insurance program for this year's renewal, they're estimating $57,542. And for the Unemployment Compensation Program, they're estimating about a $300 increase, moving from $2184 to $2407. Although, again, some of this will depend on finalized pay scale.
If you don't mind, I'd like to back up for a minute. There's a downside to this payment in lieu of vacation as to, as to, how long should a person go without taking vacation, year after year after year? In fact, it proves fact that people need to take a vacation, most especially if they're in a, I guess, I'll say, a very high-pressure job, I think, like firemen, policemen, et cetera. So, I'm wondering if we shouldn't say, okay, we do pay in lieu of vacation, but you can't do that two years in a row, or three years in a row, or put some limit on how many years in a row you can do that. I'm serious about that. I've been through it in the past in some of my other jobs, if you would, and the fact is, you know, you need to enforce the vacation side of the equation, for sure. So, I just throw that out there for consideration.
I could certainly take a look and see what's out there for policy regarding that, and see if I could adopt something for the Town of Lee. Looking back, I think your former Town Administrator was probably the biggest user of the payment in lieu of vacation, although I know the Police Chief and the Fire Chief have...
It's fine, but if we, for instance, go into just one of them and see, you know, was it, did he take vacation, did this person take vacation last year or the year before or whatever, or are we in our fourth year of payment in lieu of vacation? In which case, I say, no, we need to put a cap on how many years in a row they can go without taking a vacation.
Great. I can do some homework on...
I don't know how the board feels about that, by the way, but I really feel strongly about it.
It'd be nice to find out the individuals that are now, how much vacation did they take in the past, you know, 12 months? Because if they're taking, you know, like, two or three weeks, so I think we would need the information in terms of, you know, how much are they taking? If somebody's not taking any vacation, they're just taking pay in lieu of vacation, that's something different.
Yeah, okay.
So, maybe if, Andy, you could find out from the eight individuals, how much vacation they actually did take, maybe in the last calendar year or whatever.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. I know Joanne has that information readily available.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? Under unemployment, you were just talking about that before.
Yep.
There's no actual expense in that line for the last two years. Why? You keep, and I say, when I say "you," it's like, you is your office, not you, you.
I'm not sure why there's not any expense in there, because...
Can you find out? One of the things that I'm very particular about is if a department head keeps asking for something and never spends out of line, why do you keep asking? So...
Yeah, and I think it's actually, it's a little more of a mystery than that, because as near as I can tell, we are billed by Primex for that. They sent me an estimate of the renewal of our existing...
Yep.
...policy, so...
Is it maybe paid out of a different line or something?
I'm suspecting that's what it is, but I don't know the different line.
Can you get back to us and let us know?
I certainly can.
Those are all actuals. I mean, nothing's been put into a budget for that amount, is what you're saying? But they've all been actual...
Well, he's looking at prior years and seeing that...
Yeah, exactly.
There's no, you know, there's no expenditure for it.
Like, in 2020, it was 3221 approved, but nothing expended in that fiscal year, so in 2184 and 2021...
Normally, you're paying something.
You would think so.
Well, we're definitely getting billed for it, and they would have canceled us three years prior if we'd sent them a check for them.
Unemployment's the state unemployment.
And it's handled by Primex for us, and...
Do they do payroll?
They don't do the payroll, but they do the unemployment, and they charge us a service fee for it.
Yeah, but I suspect it's in the wrong line.
I suspect that, too, but I don't know where it is, so...
It'll be a fun adventure.
Thanks. Oh, can you, and I know you've copied the number from last year, but under the Health Insurance buyout, we've been having, I don't know, like, six. How many years is it down to now? Because some people have left, so...
I don't know the answer to that this evening, but I can certainly get that information.
Because there's usually, and hopefully we'll see it in a little bit, but usually the Town Administrator gives us the listing of who's doing what, with their names blacked out.
I do have that information. I don't have the names blacked out, but I can certainly get that for the Budget Committee.
Without blacking out the names?
Yeah. I will have my copy, and I haven't released it.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
And actually, I think Joanne does have a copy of that with the names blacked out.
Okay. Because that will tell us how many take advantage of the buyout.
Right. Thanks.
Along the lines of going out to bid for the Computer Services, it's been a while for insurance, I don't know. I know since I've been on this board, it is probably 10 years now, but...
Well, the other thing we can look at is in terms of, you know, was it three years ago or four years ago, we did that whole tweakage of who pays what? Was that maybe longer? I'm looking at Denise, because she's...
I know, I'm trying to think what you're referring to.
Well, in terms of when we changed in terms of how much the employee pays versus the town.
Oh, right, right.
I think that was a little...
Yeah, that was on time.
So, maybe that's something we should look at, too, maybe. I don't know.
I think it's been a while since we did the insurance.
One of the things, I don't have the number of folks taking the buyout, but I can give you an overview of who we have on our plan without missing any names. We have 10 employees taking advantage of single enrollment in health insurance. We have seven taking advantage of two-person plan, and we have five families. We also have some people on the Medicare plan. We have three people that are on the MedComp retiree plan, so we have 26 employees total that are on the Health Trust, Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield Health Insurance Plan.
Does that include the library staff or not?
I believe this does include the library staff. This is the overall number, and I do have a breakout for the library staff as well.
Okay, thanks. Oh, and also, the Board needs to test that top line in terms of personnel bonuses.
That's because of special circumstances this year, right?
Well, not necessarily, because 2000 and 2020 and 2021 is relatively low, and then last year, I'm not sure where that number came from.
I thought that bonuses are given out because of the...
Was it part of COVID?
Yeah, the COVID thing.
Is that what it is?
Well, bonuses were given out in lieu of a COLA last year.
Right.
But we spent all that money, and it was way more than, it was like, almost $40,000. I don't think that comes out of that line.
So, what is that line?
Well, no matter what it was in 2022, 2023, there shouldn't be a large number of them.
Oh, no, this was just Carrie, she literally just...
She just pushed everything on.
Along with, everything just got moved over until we know what to change it to.
The fire accident health insurance, that's a separate, specific to the fire department, firemen. But that's not gone up?
I do not believe it has, no. Joanne had paperwork on that. We reviewed it, and it would be staying the same.
Okay.
And that, more than likely, and I'll double-check on this, that more than likely also includes policemen. I know lots of times there's, the police get disgruntled because Tom Green orchestrates that plan on a statewide basis, and he's a fireman and always turns it, firemen's insurance includes the police in it, but I'm fairly confident it includes police officers as well. And see, we did lower the background check number, just because it's never come close to being $1,000.
You have special words or flowers to ask here?
We didn't have the volunteer, do we?
Oh, that's...
Probably won't have it in history.
Hopefully, we did.
You can still do something nice for your volunteers.
We'd like them to press your free. I like that. Just kidding.
Okay.
The rest of it, planning and zoning, I believe you have coming up at the 30th, and you've already had government buildings with Steve.
Yep.
Down the cemetery. Police is, I have a great one. First one you did.
And just in terms of the A, B, C people, and also for Denise as well, the police attorney, the chief let me know today that that number is, was 11387 is going to zero.
Oh, okay.
Chief, excuse me, chief, yes. Chief Dronsville is having Franchi do the prosecuting, and he will have a conversation with the Board in private about that, so... But chief said we can take that number and push it to zero.
Okay. Fire is coming up on the 30th.
Did you get any answers to the things we discussed last week? You were taking notes last night during the meeting.
I was taking notes?
You were.
I was?
Yeah.
There's a problem right there.
There were several things that you were acting like you...
What was I supposed to do? Oh, well, admin help for the...
I think we discussed.
Okay. Well, we just talked about that.
Do we know if we have a new librarian?
No.
There, I believe they made an offer, and what I heard, they were expecting to have a new librarian sometime in the first week in January.
Is that a thing?
I asked at the last Friday at her last day, you know, the program that she had, and they didn't have it.
So, something's happened.
So, if something's happened, I don't know.
But what do we do about that?
I don't know. It depends on what they're offering. I have no idea, so hopefully they'll tell us.
The, one of the trustees did stop in to talk with me on Friday and said that they were interested in continuing with benefits through the town side of things. Obviously, the library trustees are their own board. If they choose to have their own benefits, their own salary program, they can. She talked to me about a potential person and said that they were interested in continuing with the town, obviously, but that was as far as the discussion went.
Okay.
Scott, I believe I was taking minutes last time?
Oh, what was I supposed to do?
For one, I've been remiss, and I need to, I guess, make these look like minutes instead of a weird outline of things that we covered in the questions we had, but maybe that's all minutes need to consist of. When it came to the library, we asked if the children's librarian is full-time now because it was marked as PT versus FT on two different documents.
So, I didn't write that down, so...
Yeah, the library provided us with a spreadsheet, but then their PDF of a sort of PowerPoint conflicted, and then it said different things, but then it looked like they had not increased the salary, but they had increased, what do they call it, ancillary PR, I think was the line.
That's the benefits.
Yeah.
And maybe another line in for insurance, so there needs to be clarification on that. We were also concerned that they had left the director position salary flat.
Okay.
We don't know what that is.
All right, I will ask the Chair. Don't want to mess. Okay. I wrote it down this time.
What else did you have from your notes, Scott?
Oh, and you've got to turn those in soon, or that lady just to the right of you is going to yell at you.
Okay.
Do we send, do we send...
So, it's going to be rough.
Scott off on any other errands?
We want a clarification about the exact head count of employees split between the different public works departments.
Ooh, I did that. I did have that written down.
I was.
I don't know. I didn't do it.
I'm excited. I know.
Yeah, is the truck driver FT or PT? I have my notes. We already knew that.
I don't know.
The new position?
Yeah.
Full-time.
Full-time.
Okay.
Yeah, we were concerned about government buildings, that we need to see more exact numbers with specific projects listed.
He's working on that, the financial planning tool is sucking up all of his time, but he's getting numbers for us for those particular projects, and there's a lot of them, so.
Okay. The only other things that we discussed were the rec budget versus the social budget of ORYA, and whether or not those things are linked, and I think we agreed that they weren't linked and we didn't have a decision that we made.
And I do have the backup information from ORYA we'd need tonight if people want it. What more information are there?
I'd like to see it.
Well, it's, I can.
It's the whole folder?
Give you the information, it's not the whole folder. What I was interested in, as you're aware, they requested 32,950. Last year, you approved 15,000. One of the things that I was interested in was how many people they had served in Lee, like most of those agencies, and they had 295 specific individuals and 587 accumulated participants. So 295 and a number of them participated in multiple programs. There's, actually, this is the only copy I have, but I would be happy to email this to the budget committee if you'd like, because it gives a breakdown by program of the fees.
I sent all those out.
Andy, can you say, well, if the 500 number, is that doing a total, so we know what percent of their participants?
To, let's see.
I think that was the lead participant.
I don't think they give us, which, yes, 27% of their total participation comes from the town of Lee.
Was that in the original packet that you sent?
That was in the big, yes.
That was in the big packet? From back in September?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But last year, you gave them 15,000, right?
Yes.
And the suggestion from the rec committee this year is to take that money towards.
I remember hearing that, yes.
Parks and Rec administrator or director of sorts. I will say from prior experience, that is an exceedingly low number for a Parks and Rec director. I know, I live in Deerfield, which has about the same population as Lee, and we don't use a third party like Oyster River. We have our own director and our own assistant director, who have a full-time administrative assistant, and the budget just for the director, assistant director, and administrative assistant is well over $100,000, most of which is paid for out of the revolving fund from program fees. But I think to go into thinking you're going to replace Oyster River with a $15,000 employee is probably not.
And with our understanding that the plan was not to replace that, that they weren't really looking at doing children's programs, you know, the sports. So this is, would be for something different, but if we pulled the funds from.
Rather reach, right.
Because it was presented as a replacement, but I think our discussion was it was an augmentation, not replacement, so.
And the savings to each individual is like less than $20 per activity?
Very, by activity, I would say somewhere between $10 to $20 per activity fee per participant is the discount you get.
All those opportunities, they'll still, all those things, they just don't have that small, and Durham isn't currently getting anything.
Yeah, my understanding is that if you don't fund them, you just lose the discounted rate.
Right, which is like 10 to 20 bucks, yeah, exactly.
They still need you because of your fields and your, and your properties. I think most of the rest of the meat of the budget is scheduled for November 30th. The one thing I am aware of, as I think the board of select went into, I'm not sure if the capital improvement plan folks are going to have a capital improvement plan by November 30th.
How are we supposed to do that then? If that's supposed to be part of this budget?
Well, they know each year they have to come.
Have they had problems getting here in the past?
Yeah.
They've always gotten here.
And it was gotten here, but they're always like last minute, we never get to see it beforehand, so. You do better to just, well, that still serves a purpose, but the financial planning tool will give you a lot of information too, so. Andy, I think you still have some items though. You have general assistance, you have the bond payments.
I do. And I also have, I know you've gone through the social agencies, but I have that file here as well. And general assistance was left much the same. There was a $50 increase in cell phone, and that will actually be going away. Be replacing that with the new cell phones and not reimbursing her. We actually got a notice that her cell phone, which is an AT&amp;T phone, not an Apple phone, is being shot off as of the end of January.
Because it's 3G. 3G, yeah, okay.
It's exactly it. You can see the budget is essentially the same. And we've got the bond information for the safety complex and the transfer station, the interest broken out from the principal.
And the safety complex goes away next year, 2024.
Next budget cycle.
Yep. And then the transfer station goes the year after that.
In general assistance, we have a bunch of zeros for actual numbers for electricity and heating.
And I believe is.
The rental assistance for last year is quite low.
That's because I think there's so much government since last year.
Yeah.
So much of that was covered.
And also, our welfare officer is very good in terms of directing the other programs that provide things that they need. She does a very nice job.
I think it's important to keep a significant amount of funding there, particularly, we can get the energy outlook from this one because they run into trouble.
Well, plus the thing is, just because the budget says what it is, that doesn't mean we have to just stop at that point, because we have to.
We have to keep doing it anyway.
And if that money isn't budgeted for, it lets that person to find, doesn't it?
We still have to spend whatever it is.
Has to be moved from somewhere.
It has to be moved from somewhere else, so it'd have to be in that.
We just can't say, oh, we don't have any money in that line, I'm sorry. Great way.
Yes, yes, so I'm saying, it's a little inconvenient, that means we would have to take it out of, what is it that we pass every year?
Contingency.
The contingency fund.
Do we ever do anything, I see we have repeating and that kind of stuff, do we ever do anything with helping with insulation or anything that would be a long-term fix so that you decrease that overall spending? Sorry, company or organization?
Other programs that help with those kinds of things.
Typically, the welfare officer, the general assistance is direct assistance, the way that the applications for the aid, that sort of thing are set up. It is for a specific.
That need right now?
Immediate need, yeah.
It's like all the agencies, the king spoke to us, they provide different things, different facets.
I know, I was listening for that, and I didn't, I didn't hear that, but I was.
And then the women aid people, they're like the last resort.
Yeah.
So if there's something, like she said, what is it, fixing somebody's car so they can get to work? Nobody really covers that, but they do.
And if you don't do that, then that, everything can fall apart.
Yeah, and it makes it even worse for the person, so. Poor person.
Any other questions, Andy? Or any way you'd like, if you've got specific design you'd like to see on presentation too, I'm happy to move this to charts, graphs.
Emojis.
Not emojis, I'm not particularly good with emojis, man.
I think it's something that wouldn't help work.
We did want to see where money was coming in places too, that we weren't doing in the past.
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing, can we? Thank you, that was something I was supposed to do, maybe I should have done.
What the revenue estimates are based on, or what the actual revenue is?
Well, two things, one, I think Denise just sent it out, but every month, we look for the expenses, and she's very good about that, but also initially, we wanted revenue as well. So whatever revenues come in, so it's the same kind of thing for the revenue size as we're sending out for the expenses. So what the revenue was. But secondarily, just what you said, in terms of revenue estimates, how's that coming along in terms of what we brought in? That would be good.
Okay, I've got the last report we filed, and I can also talk to the town clerk, tax collector, and find out.
Like how much they get for dogs?
That would be licenses, car registrations, whether there are services you offer.
Yeah.
The police sometimes.
And the fire department gets money for going and doing reviews of properties too, so.
Yeah, the police department gets things for.
Same thing.
But it'll be in the same report.
That would be helpful to have that.
Same report.
I, well, certainly for the firearm police, I believe the police have a revolving account for their details, so. But I can surely get you that number too, though. Which keeps it out of the general fund at the end of the year, but.
Under software support services, she usually gives us a list in terms of what that covers.
Okay.
And I'm not asking you to tell me right at the moment, but if you can send that to us.
I can.
Oh, and the other question I had, under, you all set? Under legal expenses, you're anticipating an increase. Why are you doing that? Is there some legal case I don't know about, or what's happening? Why is that going on?
Not yet, but.
We were told that our legal expenses were really low because of Julie's experience and all that, so realistically, not, that we don't have complete pay demand, but Cassie's learning in this place.
No, I understand that, but $2,500 extra for, is there a case, or is this just a regular ongoing?
Well, I think what we had done, and this was Joanne, Denise and I, we looked back to prior years, the 17,351 that had been overspent and adjusted the budget accordingly, but I don't think it's a big deal either way. Maybe the 15 or.
Okay, well, I'm just asking the questions, so.
So how will the CIP affect what I'm looking at now?
Was that right?
How will the CIP, the CIP will give us a presentation.
Yeah, it'll give you an idea of what might be coming for warned articles, it's the most likely way it would affect.
Okay, they're not going to have any bearing on the government building budget. That's all maintenance or small, small beer sort of stuff for other end.
There's been some debate about exactly what should be considered. Typically, my understanding from the board is that complete system replacement falls under the CIP, and anything that's not a complete system replacement would be considered maintenance.
Okay.
Maintenance or renovation.
We had a great example of, you know, you have to do maintenance on the elevator, but every 20 years, whatever, you've got a body of running elevator. So you have to plan ahead for that big expense, but you have to also have money planned ahead for the maintenance.
And is there a particular reason why it's, why, is our town doing something weird when it comes to the CIP? Is that why it's taking a long time? Like, are we too detail-oriented, are we? Because I would think that you do something like, our building is worth X, therefore, we put away some percentage of that per year, and maybe you get a little bit more granular knowing that you have elevators and air conditioning, and you have something to get the carbon dioxide out of the garage and those other things. But that there's some formula that you would use to just say, here's what building maintenance costs.
I think the challenge that we have as a town is that for a very long time, buildings weren't really on anyone's sheet. They were in any place, and they weren't really part of any budget. So that's one of the biggest changes, is that we are now really planning ahead and looking, but that's going to change our budget and, because we've been not taking care of things.
Yeah.
At the level of it.
So we should expect more warned articles for.
Yes.
50,000 here, 100,000 there, put into new accounts and so on?
Many, many, many things have just been unlocked.
Just, just to give you an idea, to kind of answer your question, but kind of not. How about that? That was a fluid answer. No, but one of the things that Steve's, since Steve's taken over buildings, he's gone through and looked at different things that need to be done, things that maybe should have been done before, or even identifying problems that we didn't even know were there. So he's doing a Herculean job trying to find out what the problem is, what it costs to fix it, and then we have to go through, figure out when can we afford that, how much is it going to cost, how are we going to pay for it, that kind of stuff. So it's, it's a process. Like, one of the things he found is, they went to put up a new fixture in front of the library in the old section, and they took the old fixture down, and then one of the employees was trying to put screws in to hold it up, and he couldn't find any wood that was able to hold the screw. So they went, did some more checking, and found that a lot of the underparts of the siding have brought it away. So that needs to be dealt with. So he's looked at what the paint is, so he's done some analysis in terms of, yeah, some lead in it, but they're going to take a class so they can remediate that particular issue. But that building needs some attention, the front part of it, the old section, that needs to be dealt with. So he's finding things like that, so.
I think we've found a lot of things over the years, it's just that the next step was never taken, when we actually fixed the things that we had found. So I'm happy to hear that he's taking the bull by the horns, and we should give him all the help he needs to keep that moving straight.
I'd like to remind everybody, we still have an issue with being ADA compliant within our buildings that could really bite us if we're not, if we're not careful. I know Steve's working on it, but it's an issue that we need to keep our eyes on.
Yeah, it's one that we talked a lot about when we discussed things, whether it be buildings, and how you do that, and how to make sure that they are up to code.
So there's a lot of things.
And how does the, how does the, could you give me a civics lesson again about how New Hampshire towns work when it comes to the capital improvement plans put together by?
The legislative body determines what that looks like. It can be the planning board, or it can be a committee composed of planning board members, board members, and different things. This particular town chose the planning board option. So the planning board goes through and does the capital improvements plan.
But it doesn't have to be that way, that's just.
So you have a capital improvements committee, like the advisory budget committee?
Yes.
It's a subcommittee of the planning board.
Yes.
Right now.
Right now. The town could change.
But when it was broad enough, it was suggested it wouldn't be that, so that was, but then we went ahead and.
Is it correct that budget committees can work the same way, that you can have budget committees that are not, that we haven't set up?
Two different kinds, yes, we are advisory, you could have a municipal budget committee. The municipal budget committee generates the budget, the board does not generate the budget.
Okay.
And they're different people, so.
I can tell you from experience that the municipal budget committee, it's their budget, but they look to the select board to generate the budget, then they tear it apart. And give it back to you, and they actually have the ability to limit expenditures by up to 10% in the budget.
It seems.
Okay, so there's some limit as to how far they can slide each thing?
There is.
Okay.
You typically would have 11 members total, you would have nine members elected as large of the committee, and then you'd have a school board, appointed member, and a select board appointed member.
Good questions.
I was just going to say, very good question.
Good question.
So I, I guess I still don't quite know why it takes, why the capital improvement plan is late all the time.
That's the part of your question that I was not going to.
So that's just individual people.
I cannot speak, that's their process is autonomous.
That's internal to them, okay.
It's internal to them, I have no control over that, neither does any of the board, or the board itself, it's a separate process.
Unless it decides to change who makes that.
Then you have to get the legislative body to approve that particular change.
And there's statutory requirements, or that they have to deliver it by a certain date? Or?
Well, that's what my question was going to be, I'm looking at our schedule, and remember, it always seemed to me that the way the budget process.
If you wish, you can have a discussion with Bob Smith about it. That would be interesting, and I think you'd see.
Oh, I'm just, going into any conversation, I just want to know. Oh, I'm just, going into any conversation, I just want to know, you are obligated to do this.
Well, that's, that's what I was going to say was don't we have, isn't our whole process driven by?
It's driven by statute. And it's driven by statute.
And then we back into the other dates. So I'm looking at our schedule and, and we have some kind of large holes and I'm not sure how we get to the end product if we don't have a process for filling some of those holes. That was kind of.
Oh, you're absolutely right. Matter of fact, I had part of that discussion with John Tappin the other morning while we were waiting to meet with the energy committee. So it's a, the process of what it's going to take to feed it and, and generate, you know.
What's the drop dead date?
It's going to be, it's going to be challenging for a while anyway.
What's the drop dead date?
I don't have the drop dead date with me, but I can certainly send you the calendar for the budget. There's a series of budget guidelines.
Week in August, January.
Somewhere around there, yeah. It's about the middle of January.
The warrant has to be prepared by?
Well, it's when we finalize what the warrant is. See, the thing is, your presentation to the board is the second or third week of December, so.
It's the thirteenth.
Yeah, so.
You need to have it wrapped up by early January so you can post your public hearings.
What is the deliberative session schedule?
Probably in January, beginning of February.
What's the date for the deliberative session?
Do we have one? Are we having a real deliberative session?
I hope so.
Well, we don't, I don't believe we have an option that we can do it any other way. Unless the legislature does something relatively quick, but. It should be at DRA's website, but.
So we've never made our budget presentation to the select board previously without having the CIP and the warrant articles?
Well, usually what happens is we put them on the schedule and they say, oh, we can't do that. And then they want to be on like the last day.
They're on the last day.
I know.
They started on the last day.
They started, well, it was probably.
It was like three or four years ago, they said, oh yes, we're going to start early next year and they were late. So, you know, I, I have no control over their time. They do what they need to do when they need to do it.
Karen, I get some clarification of how the financial planning tool is going to fit into this process. That was the explanation that Karen had for why the CIP was late was because there had been some confusion with the department heads about.
They're two different things.
I know, but they, they were pulling information together for.
But I thought that they got that information pretty quickly after we asked for it.
Yeah.
So I'm not really sure why that slowed it down so much.
That was the explanation that was provided.
I don't know. But I know that everyone works really hard to get it quickly to everyone in New Hampshire.
So for the rest of the budget, it sounds like Steve is, is pretty much the major.
And that's where the big chunk of the budget is going to be.
Well, in terms of, we've got next time, planning and zoning, fire department and McGregor, CIP probably not. And then there's going to be a presentation by us for the financial planning tool. And then we have a meeting on the seventh and then we do a presentation on the thirteenth.
You have a meeting with the ABC on the side.
Because Andy really can't do much more with the payroll until we get a head count from Steve.
Yep, that's something the board has to do. We're supposed to talk about it in the next meeting. There's, was a salary study done.
We talked about this.
Yeah, so.
And there's also COLA's are steep this year. So a lot of things are going to be moving up.
And we have the, the classification and compensation study from MRI. I think their first year, if you, if you followed their full-time recommendations, recommendations for full-time employees, you would be looking at an increase of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. If the board did not, it would be less than that or somewhere in between that. And that doesn't include part-time positions, but the focus of the survey was on the full-time positions. And the total cost for implementation for the coming budget year would be twenty-six, eight and some change. And we've also discussed COLA, the CPI has stayed over five percent and closed in October, October thirty-first, closed at five point four percent. So I'd made the board aware of that, although I'm sure that the board is all aware of that anyway.
But the twenty-six thousand is just the salaries, right?
That would, yes, that was salary adjustment. So you'd have ancillary.
Right.
Which is twice that. So it'll be fifty-two, fifty-four.
Just decrease in salary.
Fifty-three, something like that, so. And that's without the COLA.
Right.
So.
And because we haven't done those raises for a while, those numbers are lagging.
The other thing that the board talked about last night, or I talked about and they listened, well, I guess they need some class too, so. But in terms of, we have some individuals that they were exempted, their eligibility exemption was now way less than that. Yeah, so that's something that I think at some point we need to look at in terms of what that is.
You had indicated that that is entirely controlled by the state?
No, it's, no, I found out that it's controlled by the legislative body. So if we wanted to raise those particular limits, because there's income limits and then there's limits for each of the categories of elderly, categories meaning the age groupings, we'd have to do a warrant article to change those numbers. Based on the information, Andy guys, we're relatively liberal, but I contacted three towns. Yeah, I contacted three towns and they're all thinking about raising them too, so. If we don't raise them, maybe we're not at the top anymore. We're maybe in the middle. I don't know. So it's something we have to consider, so.
So the first public hearing, budget public hearing is December twenty-seventh.
Oh, Mary Christmas.
But there's a range when you can have it, well.
Well, I've already, this has already been scheduled and scheduled.
Oh, that's the hearing?
Yeah, public hearing, yeah.
I thought you were talking about the deliberative session.
No, no, public hearing. Second public hearing is January tenth.
Okay.
And then the deliberative session is February fifth.
February fifth.
So those are just during the regular.
Can you send us the document? Julie usually sends out the calendar for us.
I have the calendar with all the drop dead dates for warrant articles.
Can you share that with the ABC, please?
Did anything happen with the Strefford Regional Planning Commission?
We would talk about that. Because Karen's going to come to me tomorrow.
The next meeting that Jen from Strefford Regional Planning is coming to talk to the board.
Okay.
Give an update. Hopefully they'll come in.
Yes, I got your, did they get one too?
They should have.
You guys got something from me?
Yeah, no, I sent it. I thought I passed on to make sure you guys had it and I, yes, and I was going to respond to him. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm still trying to get to the bottom of how the capital improvement program works.
How's it going?
I'm looking at the RSA. Well, I just don't like the stuff where it's like the, the board says, oh, well, what can we do? You know, some, somebody who's not, not willing to work with us and whatever, throw up our hands. So I, I don't want to do that because I don't want to throw up my hands and we have an obligation to plan things and we can't just say, well, the town will just sort of fake our way through a bunch of warrant articles, right?
Sounds good.
But what I'm wondering is, they make six-year, it says, they have to project improvements over a period of at least six years.
Yeah.
They have huge Excel spreadsheets.
Yeah.
Okay. But they, so they give you that. What's your obligation with that information?
Don't do anything with it.
Take it or leave, right? So basically, if you've got a bunch of people whose job it is to plan things and they're not planning in a way that works with this, the way that you can, the way that there's a give and take and some sort of feedback to them is your, your feed, your input is now being ignored because it's not being provided in a timely manner. And if the board is doing its own planning through this financial tool, then the board has an effective way to end around that and just say, well, thank you, your input came too late. We're moving ahead with our own ideas.
Yes, correct.
So let's not frame this as the board is powerless or bound to, to put up with the CIP's lateness. The CIP can do what it wants on its own schedule and you can do what you want. And you can be ships passing in the night. You don't ever have to interact in any way.
Some, some of the value of the CIP and the master plan is, and I know this is why a lot of committees drive the completion, even if the, the board and the budget committee are going to ignore it, is when you apply for various grants, usually very early on in the application, they question, you know, does, does your community have an updated master plan? Do you have an updated capital improvement plan? And if you can't check those boxes, lots of times you are booted out of line for what you're seeking. And I, I know that's one of the drivers for the.
So when was our last night? We did our master plan, what year was that?
Two thousand sixteen? So it's another ten years. And the thing is, I don't want to get Mr. Brown started, but I'll broach the subject because Mr. Brown asked two years ago for a assessment in terms of how the last master plan went. And he's yet to, I assume, yet to receive an answer to that particular question, which is a good question. We put all this effort into the master plan. Well, how did we do? And it's a valid question that he asks. And so far.
Well, I think, I won't, I won't correct what you said, but we did get some feedback from, I believe the conservation committee gave us feedback as to where they were with the project. I carry the master plan, we meet, so I can ask the questions. The master plan really is quite complete as far as, you know, what, what they saw when they designed this master plan and what they foresaw and so on. So I still press that. I think it's, I think it's very important that we ask the questions on what, for all the committees, et cetera, the departments. Where are you based on the master plan? They all should have a copy of the master plan. They all should know what's in it for them in the master plan. And still, even today, I, I admit, we don't press the master plan the way we should and, and it's a mistake on our part.
I think, Corey, what you're speaking to is something that I, before I came here, was frustrated with as well. And I think that what we're trying to say is, if this isn't working the way it's going right now, is there another way that we can, that we can make sure we get the information when we need it? That we can have the information that is the whole scope and not just pieces? And I think that's, I think we need to have a real conversation.
It's really pretty impressive about how well they did in projecting out where they want to go with the, this is the two thousand sixteen to the two thousand twenty-six master plan. And they really did a pretty good job of projecting out, you know? I mean, we're looking at bicycle paths now, et cetera, et cetera. All that is in the master plan. Yeah, we need to be looking at this, so. No, it's, it's something that is a very, very good management tool as far as staying on the path.
But getting the yearly updates on this is not always coming to us in a timely fashion. Yeah, and I just, I just don't want to ever leave. I, I just don't like accepting a sort of thing of, there's just an intractable problem and there's a conflict and just it's never going to happen on time. I mean, that sounds bad. It sounds like we need to push and do whatever is possible.
I've kind of, personally, this is me speaking for myself, I've kind of given up because I've fought with them for years in terms of getting this on time and getting it correct. And it's just not happening. After a while, you got to cut your losses and move on to something else because you've only banged your head against the wall so many times.
So can't we put in, in the warrant for this current year that we change how it's done?
You could, you could.
And then the town can decide.
Who writes the warrant articles?
We do.
You do.
We do. And the petition warrant articles, they come in, we can't change those, but we write.
So the ones that, that arrive at the numbers that we add to the trust funds, which, those numbers we get from the CIP each year, like how much money did we save for the new fire truck that's on the water? So those, it, it doesn't seem to me, it's never seemed to me, that when we finally saw the product, that it needed to be that late. I, there was nothing about what they generated that seemed to me, that's why I'm hoping if they allow it now, they're going to come trotting in here next week.
Okay.
Can't tell you that.
But, but any year, we could put it forward in a warrant article that we are not going to have a planning board. We're going to have a planner, planning advisory committee.
Well, no, no. Okay, there is a planning board.
You can change who is on the CIP.
Yeah, who creates the, the CIP?
Right. It doesn't have to be the planning board.
I see, I'm sorry. So yeah, it says here that the planning board or a capital improvement program committee. So we could change, and we could just basically take away one job from the planning board. They would still do all the other planning board things.
And then you have different people doing that that would have a bigger standing for the date.
The RSA goes in to specify who's on that particular committee.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at capital improvement program, how, who, who does it and what the obligations are. And this part of the RSA at least just says what the obligations are of, of the board and, and town officers or town employees toward that committee. Basically, the committee can say, give me information and they have to give it over. But unfortunately, NH.gov is not able to load right now duties of the planning. Be able to see what they're actually obligated to do.
Well, if they had such difficulty over the years of doing this, maybe it's more than they can handle and all the other things that they're doing. You know, there has been a lot going on. So maybe it would be something they'd loved it just kind of.
Maybe.
Maybe.
You can also use regional planning commissions to assist you in this. I, I know from my background, we had used Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning to sort of orchestrate the capital improvement plan and the master plan revisions.
I remember they did a lot of that for other towns, so.
It wasn't expenditure, but it wasn't an unreasonable amount, at least from southern planning. And it moved the process along and, and quite accurately. I mean, they, they bring professionals to the table.
One frustration that I think Mr. Smith has voiced is that sometimes he hasn't gotten the level of cooperation with the department heads that he has wanted. Is that some support that he could be given?
I've never heard of them saying, no, we're not going to give you that information.
I don't think it's, it's that. I think it's just tie latest.
No, I don't, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
It's all been done already. Like it, it was just had to be taken from one to another, right? There's nothing extra.
Well, I think the process, the process is going to be just as difficult as we move into the financial planning tool as far as collecting all of that data and, and being able to, to press the button and the tool spits out, you know, all the things, all the things we're looking for. So maybe it's not a spit out, but it's.
Yeah, I think we have to make one or two decisions based on.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, it's different than the problems they have trying to generate the CIP and you ask, well, where is this or where is that? Is collecting the data, getting answers to the questions when they do submit the data and, and, you know, you say, well, why is this, why is that and so on? I think we're going to have that same problem with the financial planning tool for a while, for sure, in order to generate a decent document.
But we won't ever have to come up with, as like that whole brand new hole of, you know, areas that have never even been talked about. Like now that Steve has put the building things and things like that on there, so now, now you just add to it. But it's never going to be that huge generation of data that we've had to do this year.
Because it's going to be updated.
Next week, when Jen comes in, maybe we should be asking their take as far as Strefford Regional Planning Commission, as far as what they're able to provide to help with this.
Yep, we can ask them, yeah.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine, twenty-nine. My question is, obviously not this year.
Thirtieth? Thirtieth.
It's Monday?
Monday the twenty-ninth, our next meeting is the thirtieth.
Our next meeting is the thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay.
It is because.
That's what it says on our, oh.
No.
Yeah.
I'm talking, no, I'm talking about a, it's the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth is Strefford Regional.
Strefford Regional is coming to the select board meeting.
Oh, okay.
We should verify with them because I did get an email from somebody from Strefford Regional saying that they were coming and they, they said a different day. So I just want to.
They did?
I can, yeah, should I forward you that email?
Yeah.
They just said a different, and, and it, it sounded like they just had the date wrong, but I will, I will come check with them. I'll send that to you.
So they're coming like Monday the thirteenth?
Well, I think it was just a computer.
That happens all the time.
Scotty, is, is it the select board's vision that the financial planning tool will ultimately replace the CIP?
No. That's not my vision. They can speak for themselves, but there's some benefit to having two different groups looking at things. That's what I have.
Different eyes.
Different eyes and different perspectives too, in terms of those particular things. And I think the CIP is never going to get to the detail that this particular tool is at. Because just remember, the CIP only covers certain things. This covers everything. So like the CIP doesn't cover, you know, the reevaluation fund, doesn't cover the group benefits fund. So there's things that it just doesn't cover, but I value the two different groups. So there's things that it just doesn't cover, but I value that two different groups are doing it, looking at the same kind of, hopefully similar information, and they come to a conclusion, we come to a conclusion. So more data is better, the only problem is just assessing it all. Cause that's, at least for me, that's what the financial planning tool is showing, there's a lot of information there, so.
So does anyone know what the statute says with regards to, I understand that the planning board must supply the C I P? That's under the statute.
That's set by warrant article, you can have.
By warrant article, right.
You can have the planning board do it, or you can have a committee.
Right, I get that part, but the, the, the C I P must be, by whoever has to be presented, that's statutory.
It is, but.
What does the board, I mean, what does the board have to follow as far as, do they have to accept it? I mean, like, if they don't get it to you by that date, you're just moving on without them? I mean, are they under any requirement to move the date or to accept, to wait, to?
Well, I, I suspect they're not meeting the date on November thirtieth to meet with the A B C and the board, but I suspect at some point in December, they're gonna provide information.
They will meet the budget.
The thing is, it's taking the A B C out of the loop in terms of giving their opinion on what is being presented. So I think that's.
We don't get to have a discussion then about, oh gosh, we need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on X, so we need to cut Y away from the budget, what do we think we should do there?
Yeah.
Instead, the budget is in place and now there's a large capital expense and it's just up to the board to make that, or. Why can't we do all this?
Which is unfortunate, yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll just be an email to the board or, and it won't be discussed, it won't be a presentation? It'll just be, okay, all right, I'm.
Well, they can still present it to the board.
Okay.
They, they can still do that.
Okay, I'm just.
So. And years ago, I don't remember how many years ago, then we just made the presentation to the board. At some point, it switched to doing the A B C, I don't know how many years ago, many, many years ago, so.
Yeah, RSA six seventy-four five says, "The sole purpose of the capital improvement program shall be to aid a mayor or selectman and the budget committee in their consideration of the annual budget." So that's its sole purpose, and essentially what we're saying here is that if, if it happens after the budget committee convenes and does all of its meaningful work, then it's out of half of its sole purpose. So half of its purpose has been gutted, um, all right.
And like I said before, I, we don't control them.
Yeah.
The only control we have over the planning board is who we appoint, so.
Okay, so where are we now in our meeting?
I think we're all done.
Are we all done?
I think so, nothing else?
Sorry, I took civics courses in Wisconsin, it works differently there, so.
Everybody's gonna turn off. I'll declare the meeting adjourned.